President.
Councilman Lenart.
Here.
Councilman Rigsby.
Here.
Mayor Cooper.
Present.
We have a quorum.
Thank you. You know, I have an interesting suggestion for the, for the company, for the software vendor. We have like a check-in button, a present button. Then you wouldn't have to call the roll.
So it, it, it does that.
Oh, okay. So that.
When you're in the screen, you've been taken.
So the weird thing, that's what my kid has to do now in high school. Like they don't call roll anymore. They check in like in an iPad at the door, which leads to the possibility of all kinds of shenanigans, but I don't think they've figured that out yet. Okay, I'm sorry. Well, moving, moving on, we had no closed session or any workshops this evening. Um, we'll, we'll go ahead and start officially with the invocation of Pledge of Allegiance led by Dr. Lenart. Thank you very much. Mr. City Manager, are there any items to be added or deleted?
No, sir.
At this point, we will invite the public to participate in any non-agendized item. This is our public participation section. If you wish to speak, please run forward with a request card. Seeing nobody, I was hoping we'd get one. No. Not even begging. Okay, so we'll move forward onto conflicts of interest. Um, we will, we'll handle those as they come up. And that moves us into our first public hearing. Item two A. So is it supposed to pop up on the screen now or no? Oh, okay, got it.
So, Mr. Mayor, tonight, we're going to have Nicole Campbell. She's our new associate planner for the city of Loma Linda. She started in March. So tonight she will be doing the presentation before you.
On the top corner, you can press from beginning on the top left. Okay, ready. So I'm Nicole Campbell, as Lorena mentioned. I'm the associate planner for the city. Tonight I will be presenting Development Code Amendment twenty-three-one-fifty-five. This is a request to amend Title seventeen of the Loma Linda Municipal Code to establish a procedure for processing reasonable accommodation requests. The following are guiding documents for this amendment. Federal and state law requires local governments to make accommodations for individuals with disabilities who are seeking access to equal housing. The Loma Linda twenty-twenty-one to twenty-twenty-nine housing element identifies housing needs and goals for the city. A program within this housing element states that the city will adopt a ministerial process for reviewing requests for reasonable accommodations. So by making, approving this amendment, we are going, we are coming into compliance with federal and state mandates and meeting the goals within our city's housing element. The proposed ordinance will add a new section to the development code. This section will establish a procedure for processing requests for reasonable accommodations. These requests come from individuals with mental or physical disabilities. Reasonable accommodations include a change, exception, adjustment, or modification to the city's standards, regulations, policies, or procedures. These requests are considered when the accommodations are considered necessary for a person with a disability to enjoy their home. So this mainly applies to homeowners that are wanting to make modifications to their own residences. Um, and it's not, although it can apply, it's not intended for the interior of buildings. An example of this may include allowing flexibility and setback requirements to allow for a wheelchair ramp. So when, um, if a homeowner wants to have a wheelchair ramp, but the setback doesn't allow for it, the city will allow flexibility and they will be able to have it. Requests for reasonable accommodations are something that residents can already take advantage of. Um, but this ordinance creates a more streamlined process that benefits residents with disabilities. The ordinance includes application requirements, review procedures, and findings. And as proposed, the ordinance will allow these requests to be reviewed and approved by staff. So based on the staff report and the presentation, staff recommends that City Council first determine that the project or the proposal is not subject to the requirements of SEQA, um, and then adopt Council Bill oh-two-zero-three. That concludes the presentation. Myself and staff are available for questions.
Oh, are those requests? Well, uh, we, we need questions first, but, um. No, no, it's okay. We do everything informally for us, so that's not a problem.
Does it, does it ordinarily give us an order? Yeah.
Why, how'd they both get two?
It was a tie.
Really? That's pretty cool. But, but they're both two. So like, who's first? John, you want to go?
Alphabetical. Alphabetical.
Okay. No, we do that after this.
Thank you for the presentation. Uh, had some questions on the background. So Program two-point-two is going to adopt a ministerial process for reviewing requests for reasonable accommodation. Before that, it mentions to meet housing needs for households of all income levels. Is this tied with income levels or is this, um, just like a general ADA guideline that we're trying to pass?
It's for the purposes of ADA. It's not tied to income levels. Um, that's just included with, it's just a headline in the housing element. So there are other programs other than two-point-two that do relate to income levels, but this specific one does not.
Got it. So when we mention income level, that's referring to the whole, um, housing plan, not anything to do with today?
Correct.
Thank you.
Does this have application to, um, businesses or just private residences?
Businesses are already covered by ADA. Um, so this can apply to it, but they're already covered by ADA federal law.
Okay, so ADA would auto-automatically eliminate any of our rules that would restrict them from putting in a ramp, for example?
That's correct.
Okay. Is there any kind of a, an indication that this will expand into mandates in private residences or rather, rather than just being permissive of their desire to accommodate themselves and their guests?
It doesn't address mandates. It's only allowing those who make the request.
I ju- I just wonder if there's like a phantom slot where we can predict that they're going to slot in some mandates. Indications from the left-wing rulers of our state.
Is this a response to some of the recent, um, city council meetings where we've had, uh, residents bring up ADA issues or was this always going to be on the agenda at one time or another?
So it does alleviate those concerns, but it's just required by our housing element and federal law.
I was trying to select Lynette to put her next in the queue to say something, but it won't let me do it. Okay, any other questions from the dais? I actually wanted to show you something. Sorry, I can't, I forgot your name. Uh, I was just, I figured I might as well call you over here. Is there a way to move this around so it doesn't block the rest of the agenda?
I have a note to make it scroll all the way up past this because this is basically hard set right there.
Okay. I think Lynette's been doing that though. I can't remove, I, I can't, I can't remove them. How do I do it? Just one hit? Oh, okay, okay, okay. So I can just ignore that then, based on our culture? All right, any other questions on the dais of this item? Uh, I, we will open the public hearing, but, um, I had a question because on the hard copy it appeared, I, I, and I gave it up for this evening. Are there two parts of this or we take it all in one motion when we get there?
It's at your discretion. You can do it either way.
Okay, all right. Well, let's, let's open up the public hearing. Scott? No, you're good. Okay. Close the public hearing. So I, I do have a kind of a question on procedure. Are we going to? No, I, I won't ask that. I'll, I'll ask that later. It was, it's another question related. I'll, I'll talk to you offline about it. All right, so do we have any interest from the council on moving this?
I'll move Amendment number P-two-three-dash-one-five-five to amend Title seventeen of the Loma Linda Municipal Code and determine that the, that the amendment is not subject to the requirements of the State of California SEQA.
Now. Should we wait, should we ask for Lynette to start the vote? Because I see I have a button here that says start the vote also.
I ju- I just wanted to clarify, this is the first reading, the introduction of this ordinance. Isn't that correct? Yes. Okay, so maybe we could add to the motion that this is an introduction of this ordinance.
Maker.
Wait, yes. Please add that as the first reading.
Okay. So we're back there. Do you? Yeah, and I'll let you stay in control of that because that way it moves at whatever speed you need it to move. I don't want to be hitting buttons and screwed up.
Okay, so I'll, I'll just go ahead and, like I normally do, and then I'll start the vote. Uh, motion is to determine that the Development Code Amendment is not subject to the requirements of the State of California Environmental Quality Act SEQA pursuant to Section number one-five-zero-six-zero-C-two and one-five-zero, one-five-zero-six-zero-C-three of the SEQA guide, of the SEQA guidelines, which applies to proposals that are not considered projects as defined in Section number one-five-three-seven-eight of the SEQA guidelines and proposals that do not result in a significant change to the environment. And to adopt or a, and to, for the first reading and set to, uh, and for the first reading and set the second hearing to October. Council Bill oh-dash-two-zero-three dash zero-three, an ordinance to update Title seventeen zoning of the Loma Linda Municipal Code and establish a reasonable accommodation ordinance in compliance with federal and state law that will provide flexibility in the application of the Development Code standards in order to provide individuals with disabilities an equal opportunity to housing. That is Development Code Amendment number P-two-three-dash-one-fifty-five, and I will start the vote. So motion carried unanimously.
So I have another question on the software. The button down here for the microphone, is that supposed to control our microphone? And not implement it? Okay, sorry. Keep asking those questions. What do you guys think? Is that better to have the button there or to reach around and?
One's a little hard to.
It would be kind of easier on the screen because it's a little misleading. If you look down at the screen, it says mic is off, and so I was just playing with it and it obviously doesn't affect that. All right, anyway. Yeah, no request. I don't think we need to worry about that. Just, but mic on and off would be kind of cool. Okay, uh, we'll move on to item three A, which is our consent calendar.
I got one question.
We have, uh, we have a first, but we do have a question. What's your question on?
For item number three I, how much longer is this going to go on? I know it's been going on for decades now.
I'm trying to, trying to get here to where you're at, but I don't see it. For the tank.
Will be for a long, long time. It's until they, they clean up the, uh, contamination in, in the groundwater.
Has there ever been an ETA given?
No.
No.
It's in perpetuity.
So it'll never be clean?
No. Well, a hundred years from now, so.
I'll second the motion.
It'll never be clean because we're only sipping a little teeny bit of what's flowing by. We're not getting all of it, so it'll just keep flowing by.
So a question again about the system. I don't see the consent calendar. Okay, okay. Uh, we do have a first to move it. And a second. Okay.
Motion is to approve the consent calendar items as submitted. I will start the vote. Motion carried unanimously.
Okay, moving on to item five A, and that's to appoint a full-time member to the San Bernardino County Transportation Authority. Uh, as you all know, Dr. Rigsby, um, is, is, got some work obligations that make it hard to attend this meeting, so, um, we're, I was kind of hoping we were going to come to an agreement internally and we have two folks that are vying for this position, so felt it necessary to bring it forth to the council and we make an official vote on it. But Dr. Rigsby did have another pretty good idea earlier, so, um. Well, let's, let's see. Um, unfortunately, one of the applicants is not here, so, um, Mr. Jindal, do you want to give like a speech or anything prepared? A pitch?
I don't have a speech. Um, so my pitch, as you guys know, I've been the alternate for three years and I've been attending all the meetings for the past five. Pretty in tune with what's going on. I'm pretty active, so I've had people thank me for asking some of the questions I have. I know Dr. Daley, um, is very active with, uh, a similar committee as well, so that's why he was interested. I think both of us are pretty active in whichever respective committees we're on. My idea is, is that we're going to revisit all the committees anyways in a few months. If for now, we can, if I can become the, uh, the main delegate and if Dr. Daley can become the alternate. There's only about five meetings left, I think, before we have to revisit all committees anyway, so it doesn't make too much sense to have someone new come in, uh, go through the orientation and especially on some of the sensitive stuff, go review it all over again.
Questions? Yes, or an idea or direction?
Uh, I think it's logical if, um, Mr. Jindal's the alternate and the position is open. I think it's logical that the alternate move up.
Okay. Um, I think we're, I think we're all at a consensus, so. I don't think we need a motion on it.
We did have Councilman Daley as the alternate.
Alternate. Okay. All right, congratulations, sir. Um, I can't see what's next on the agenda because it's covered. I'm assuming it's item six.
Report of a council member.
Ah, okay. Um, I've got nothing. Anybody else? Anything they want to bring up, talk about? I do have one thing, but I'll, I'll wait.
I have three things. So, um, one, we've had a few storms come through the city. Um, I had mentioned this yesterday about the sandbags on the hills. So I finally got a location. I don't know who this individual is, but what they said is that there were no sandbags on the roads coming down from the south hills such as Pecan and Willibor. So this is when that big storm hit. Um, we can't do much about it now, but the request was if we can get prepared for the next rainy season and have sandbags ready to be placed on those streets, so there's not a whole bunch of water rushing down.
I can actually jump in and answer that. Um, so I, I had some conversations with the, with the fire chief as this was going on because, uh, our city manager was out of the country. And, uh, when, when all this stuff started happening and we made, uh, very timely request to purchase sandbags, they were no longer available. Every other city, every other organization, everybody else was, was buying them out. So we ended up with a very limited amount here. However, um, they made the decision to put those up for, for the residents. And, uh, and so I know a lot of residents came and got them and cleaned them out, but it wasn't for lack of trying to get more sandbags. Um, whether or not, I, I'm not an engineer, so I'm not sure about.
We have sixteen pallets of sandbag.
Now.
Yeah, a lot. And they took them all. And just let you know, uh, at the end of Pecan and, and Willibor, we have the little dam that we put up at the end, permanently dam, at the, permanently at the end of those two streets.
Was that before or after? Like do we?
We have that every, since, uh, the flood of two thousand and ten. We put up a series of dam up in the hill, uh, at the end of Mountain View and also a dam at the, at the Pecan and, and Willibor.
So I don't have pictures. This is just a comment by a resident. In your opinion, is there like any issue with water coming down when it rains very hard?
We usually put the sandbag so that, so that the water will, will collect at the end, at the bottom, or the sand and debris will collect at the bottom and go to the catch basin. Yes, so.
Got it. And we didn't do that this time?
We didn't do that this time.
There, there's also a problem with houses that flooded last time. Are we doing anything about the Faneuse House?
Yes, we put that, we put that.
On your microphone?
It is on. It is on, but it moved closer. Yes, we, we did. We put a K-rail, a barricade up at the end of the street. Yeah. Even though I've been Thailand, believe it or not, I was on the phone with my staff the whole time texting, not, not calling. Yes.
Okay, thank you.
And, and because of, just let you know how it, it turned out very well. We only have a small tree that, that fell, three of them. And, and the reason for that is we have been doing a lot of tree trimming ahead of time. Uh, we spend sixty, seventy thousand dollars a year on tree trimming, and this is exactly the reason why. So when we have storm, we have wind, uh, our trees are doing pretty good.
All right, second item on a somewhat related topic, um, about trees. We planted new trees in that area where we took out the really old one, right? Okay, great. Thank you.
And, and the, um, the lady who, who requested, now she's on my park ammendication committee, so she's very active.
Thank you. Um, and last one, so I think we all got an email about this. Assembly member Reyes has an annual thirty under thirty. Um, this year in the past year, we've been in her district. So number one, um, if you know anyone that's under thirty that has done a lot of work in the, in the region, uh, please nominate them, but I was also wondering if we have anyone on staff, so whether that's PD, Fire Department, or, or city staff, have made some major contributions to how the city's run or any major projects they've done, this might be a good opportunity to highlight them. And that's it from my end. Thirty people under thirty years old.
It's, it's a campaign ploy. Yeah, it's too, it's too bad she's just not more in tune with her cities and represented, uh, representing appropriately, but that's, uh, my own personal feeling. So, um, I have League of Cities conferences coming up in two weeks. Jarvan and I are going to be attending that. The two big things for League of Cities, like they have been for the last couple of years, are homelessness and obviously the fentanyl epidemic. And, uh, we'll see what comes out of that, but that's all I got. Anybody else? Go ahead.
Um, the organization that just celebrated their twenty-five years, are we good for the next meeting to honor them? The one that's very active with our Chamber of Commerce.
Oh, 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 unforgettable. Yes. So, so Tim, uh, came to our, uh, Chamber of Commerce breakfast. And what, what is he looking for? Again, he looking for?
So they celebrated twenty-five years. They had their start in Loma Linda. Um, they've done a lot of good work, so we, just recognition from the city.
Okay. Yes.
Sounds good. Okay. Um, again, I'm not sure, uh, reports of officers?
Yes, I have, uh, good news. The, uh, if you drive by California and Citrus, the traffic signal is in operation. It's working, so.
Full operation, not four-way flash?
Not, nope, it's working now. Took a while to get the, uh, the battery backup delivered, so. And, uh, starting later this week, we'll be doing a lot of service seal, a project on, um, subdivision north of Lawton, uh, to the post office and, uh, west of Brenmore and via Oro Street. So those will get service sealed. And then next month, we'll grind pave the Peterson Track, which is east of Mountain View, view, north of Mission. The subdivision, uh, east of Mountain View, south of Lawton, all the way to Brenmore, all the way to Beaumont. Van Louven from Mountain View all the way to, to the, uh, Community Gardens. We'll get grind and overlay, so we have a lot of street. We can pave, um, next week and, and next month. And the Storm drain at the end of Lawton.
All right. Okay, um, I think that's it for this agenda. How do we move into the next one now?
This, this part goes really fast. We don't do much.
All right. Um, are there any, let's do the housing authority. Are there any items to be added or deleted?
No, sir.
Any reports, uh, from the public on non-agendized item? I think the only thing there is a consent calendar. Seeing nobody, we'll close the public hearing. And we have the consent calendar.
Move it.
I have a first and a second. They were, they were tied. I don't know which one was first or second. Dr. Lenart and Dr. Rigsby. Okay. All, we'll do an old school. All in favor? Aye. 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 Okay, that motion passes. I think that closes that agenda item. And any reports of members? Any reports of officers? Seeing none, we'll be done with the, that agenda. Moving on to the successor agency. Are there any items to be, I'm sorry, I'm trying to, I don't know if you're trying to catch up. Any items to be added or deleted?
No, sir.
Uh, any public comment? Seeing nobody, we'll move on to the consent calendar there. There are a first and a second. Same two. Uh, oh, we do have a question. Awesome.
That was only a one-time thing, right? It was for the bond, I believe. Where, it's not coming up again for at least a while?
Okay. Uh, yes, we did have same first and same second. Um, all in favor? Aye. Anybody opposed? No. Um, reports of officers, reports of staff, council, nobody? All right, that'll close that agenda. Sorry. Oh, no, though. Mr. Daley wasn't here. Okay. All right. Just a general comment. This looks pretty cool. Thank you, guys, for, for your stuff here. This is definitely... So, so I think our general feeling is we prefer the staff to all be on the same page, be able to access all the same stuff, so whatever we have to do to create the same for the positions... I, I think we should include all of them. And I'll tell you why. One of the, one of the kind of things that doesn't happen very often, but, but it does happen, is sometimes we'll have a combined meeting with the Planning Commission. So in theory, they could end up occupying some of these other seats, and staff would be sitting down there. But again, we refer a lot to staff, and it, I know it's my preference to have, have them have the same view, so we're all on the same page. Just very open like that here. Yeah, I think it just, it just might be, because it's right in front of you. Yeah, I mean, could we add them on to the original agenda and just call them a different number? Do you guys have any issues with looking at your stuff online or any of that?